Ready?
Okay, I just have one person that's joining now. Okay, everybody that was in the waiting room is now in.
Pledge of Allegiance, stand.
I don't have my flag on this computer, sorry.
Flag of the United States of America. Which ends one nation.
With liberty and justice for all.
I just want to ask everyone to mute themselves until it's your turn to speak because we get a lot of background noise and a lot of interruption when people are trying to provide testimony. The 48 hour notice is required under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met as notice of this meeting was emailed on August 31st, 2020, published in the Esberry Park Press, The Co-Star and The Coaster. Copy has been placed on the bulletin board in the Borough Office and a copy has been filed with the Borough Clerk. Mr. Afuso?
Here.
Mr. Quinlan? Is not with us. Mr. Wade? Mr. Wade? Mr. Wade, you keep going in and out on your... There you go. You're here. Mr. Mayor? Ms. Phillips is not with us yet. Ms. Rosenberg is excused this evening. Mr. Correa is excused this evening. Mr. Cattelli? Mr. Cattelli?
Here.
Okay. And Ms. Brunel is not with us yet. And Chair Rosenberg?
Here.
I'm also...
She's here.
Oh, there she is. Hey, Deb. Deborah Brunel is with us. Also present, Mark Kietrick, Attorney of the Board, Gerald Frida, Board Engineer, and Christine Bell, our Board Planner.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the meeting of August 20th, 2020.
Second.
Mr. Cattelli?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Take it off mute.
Okay. Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg?
Yes. First case. Scott and Enza Isgat. 412 Lorraine Avenue. Represented by Jeffrey Beekman, CNN.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board Members. Jeffrey Beekman of the Beekman Law Firm. I see that I have on here my clients, Scott and Enza Isgat. In addition to that, we have our architect, Eric Kyler, who is present.
Who's that, your case?
Okay, so why don't we, if each one of those individuals could raise a right hand along with Ms. Bell and Mr. Frida? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
I do.
Yeah.
Scott and Enza, just unmute yourselves.
Got it.
And for the record, you swear?
I swear.
Thank you.
I'm new to Zoom.
So, I'm gonna have Scott, you're gonna testify. Can you just describe the current conditions of the property, the home, for the board?
Yeah, we have a single-family home. The lot size is about 47 by 100. It's built in, the tax card says 1944, but it's probably more like 1920. It's a very old house. We have a non-conforming side yard with our east neighbors. The house is not centered on the property. We're only about 1.3, 1.4 feet from our neighbor's property line. Located at 412 Lorraine Avenue.
So when you were looking to do some redevelopment of the property, what situations or concerns did you come across with the existing structure?
Well, the existing structure, it's very, very old. About 100 years old. It has old knob and tube, electrical, no insulation. And the foundation is so old that we really can't do anything with it. We can't add on to it. Making things worse is our, the house is right on the property line. It's only, like I said, 1.3 feet away from the property line. So we'd like to move that to a conforming, safe distance.
Okay. And with respect to that, you spoke with your architect, Eric Kyler, as far as designing a new home as opposed to redeveloping the existing?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And when you looked at that, you understand that your lot is deficient by approximately three feet width-wise, lot width?
Yes, that's correct.
And it's approximately 47 by 100, which means it's also deficient about 300 square feet, based upon lot, square footage of 5,000 square feet. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Now, did you look to see whether there was any property next to your property that you could potentially purchase to get that extra three feet and an extra 300 square feet?
Yeah, we looked at that. We're boxed in. The property to the east of me is already developed. And there are 26-foot wide lot. The property right next to me, along Fletcher Lake, there are 50-foot lot, but it's already developed. So if we tried to buy anything from them, then their lot would be non-conforming. And then the people behind us, their lot is really small, too. I think their lot is, according to the tax card, 36 by 88 feet. And there's two houses on that, so we can't buy anything from them.
Okay. Those are really the only questions I have. Strike that. One other thing we looked at, as far as some of the setback issues, you also looked at where you could put your, the front of the dwelling, the front of the dwelling to meet the setbacks, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And as far as you know, where it's proposed, as far as the dwelling, as well as the front porch, the covered porch, those are in conforming conditions with what's proposed, correct?
Yes, that's correct. We had the engineering reports done, and we're all conforming with that.
Okay. And we're also proposing, other than the lot width and lot size, you're really also proposing all of the construction to be within the setback limits, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're not utilizing any of the zoning ordinance exceptions into side, front, or rear yards with what's proposed, as far as you know?
As far as I know, no, not at all.
And specifically, in the rear, the covered porch in the rear, that has a little bit of a covering over the porch, the porch itself is not into the setback, and the covering is not into the setback. Is that correct?
That's correct. That little overhang over the door in the back, no, that's not in the setback.
And what's the reason why you're asking for that overhang as opposed to leaving it open?
Well, basically, it's just, it's where the sliding door will be, which steps out into the backyard. And that little overhang over the door is just to keep the rain and the snow and the elements out.
So if you're entering with groceries or whatever it might be, you're not sitting there in the rain trying to fiddle with your keys to get into the house?
That's exactly right.
Thank you. Those are the only questions I have for my client at this point.
Anybody from the board have questions? For their client? Anybody from the general public have questions for the client? Anybody, Kristi?
Do you have any? No hands raised?
Yeah, we got one, Mr. Gertie's. Got his hand raised.
Okay.
Hello. So I know Scott and Enza, and they're super...
There's only a question, not a comment.
Sorry?
There's only a question, not a comment.
Not a comment. Okay.
Not yet, not yet.
Thank you. Before we go on to Eric Kyler's testimony, Mark, is there anything we should be marking? Or, I mean, most everything we've submitted on the electronic?
Right, so...
Didn't you send something new today?
I did send something new yesterday, and I did send a couple of things new today. So that's actually why I'm asking, because it's pertinent to Eric's testimony.
Sure. So, hey, Kristi?
Yes.
The, in looking at what we have listed...
I don't have hard copies of what was submitted electronically. We got it electronically, and I got it posted on the website for the public.
All right, so it's on there already?
Yes, yes, it's on the website, and I transmitted it to the board members and the board professionals. But I, we don't have the hard copy yet because it came yesterday.
Understood. Okay.
But I don't have anything to physically mark right now.
Yes.
Right.
So why don't you just advise everybody, Mr. Beekman, what was submitted yesterday and what was submitted today?
Sure. So as we were discussing testimony yesterday, we realized that particularly the proposed left-side elevation leaves out the deck and the railing and the stairs. And it kind of leads to believe there's a little bit different layout in the back. And it appears that it actually does go over the setback line. So Eric has actually revised Sheet A1 to reflect that one little change. And it's actually noted on there with a, with a... It's circled.
It's circled.
So that's the only change. It's just a revision of Page A1 of the architectural documents.
So, in looking at what we have posted, that looks to be number seven.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And that is in the setback area?
Eric will testify that, but the short of it is no.
And if I may, for the board's understanding, everything that was just stated is proper. The change reflects what it will look like, and it's a positive change. So, everything's in order.
So, the other documents we submitted today were just the property cards of the property to the east, the property to the west, and the property to the north. So east and west are both located on Lorraine Avenue. And the one to the north is located on Fletcher Lake Avenue, directly behind the rear of the property, oriented towards Fletcher Lake. But we just submitted that for the purposes of what Mr. Isgat just testified to. And that's related to the lot sizes of the adjoining lots.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Isgat? I'm sorry. Mr. Kyler?
Just a brief question. Are you planning on using this as a permanent residence, as a summer home or a rental home, just out of curiosity?
It's eventually gonna be a permanent home.
That's our plan.
That's the plan, as, I'm in my 50s now, so I gotta start thinking about that.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. And if I could follow up on that, Scott, even if it doesn't become your permanent home, your intention is to build it so that it can become someone's permanent home, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Eric, can you just, have you testified before the Bradley Beach Zoning Board in the past?
None in front of this board.
Okay. So can you just give a little bit of background of your credentials as an architect?
Absolutely, absolutely. For the record, my name is Eric Kyler, with Blue Line Architecture, located at 397 Franklin Ave. in Wykoff, New Jersey. I've been a licensed architect since 2001. I have my master's in architecture from NJIT. And I've testified in front of countless boards throughout New Jersey in planning board and zoning board applications.
And you've been accepted as an expert in architecture by those?
Field of architecture, yes, sir.
Mr. Beekman, he's okay.
Thank you. So Eric, can you just describe it, or give the board an overview of what the proposal is on this property?
Sure. As Scott had mentioned in his testimony before, you know, one of the first things we do is look at the house to see, you know, what can we do with the existing structure? In this case, it didn't make any sense. There were too many deficiencies in the structure and foundation. And specifically, the side yard setback, almost on the property line. So what we did was, we took the lot size, took the setbacks, and tried to design a home that fit within that envelope, also that fit the needs of what the Isgats were ultimately looking for. The home's approximately about 2,500 square feet of livable space on two floors. It has an unfinished basement for storage and an unfinished attic area, walk-up attic, again, so we don't have to have the pull-down stair. If we go to the architectural plans, we'll start on Sheet A1, the new revised sheet. Real quick, for the record, the plans I'm referring to are proposed new home to be reconstructed for the Isgat residence, 412 Lorraine Ave., Bradley Beach, tax lot 25, block 35. The original drawings are dated 616, and the revision date to Sheet A1 is 916.
And that's 2020?
2020, thank you.
Thank you.
So Sheet A1 shows the elevations of the property. You know, we tried to... Yes.
Eric, do you want to share your screen, or will that help you, or do you want me to try to share it?
Um, sure. I think I can manage it. See?
Just because it makes it a little bit easier while you're trying to describe it?
That work?
Yep.
All right. So I'm looking at the revised Sheet A1. The, starting it from the top left, proposed left-side elevation, front elevation, we show the porch, you can see that in the side view. The left side is up against, the proposed right-side elevation is up against the other home. And they're kind of back-to-back, so there wasn't a lot of features, architectural features there. We did try to break up that elevation with some trim bands. But everything that you see in the home is to try to break it up, so it's not a big box. We wanted to make this look like, you know, it had depth to it and openness and airiness at the same time. Sheet A2. Now I'm switching over to the original drawings, did that work?
Yes.
Yes.
Sheet A2 shows the proposed basement plan. Again, it's an unfinished basement with a mechanical room, first-floor plan, with a one-bedroom downstairs, mudroom entrance, bathroom, two bathrooms, a powder room and a full bathroom, a laundry room, and an open kitchen, living room plan. This second-floor plan has, when you come up the stairs, open loft area, which opens up onto that covered porch balcony, we'll get to that in a little bit, and three additional bedrooms, two bathrooms. Sheet A3 is the proposed attic plan, unfinished right now. The area meets the requirements for a half-story as far as the floor area below. And you can see that in the building section to the right.
Okay. So let's go back to Sheet A2. All right, so on the second floor, we have that balcony. Now, that location of the dwelling where the balcony is, where the bedroom is, you're showing there dash lines, is that correct?
And what, the dash line in front that you see over the porch roof below is the average setback line that was established by Landmark Survey of that 20.54 feet?
So that second floor, even though it's a covered balcony, actually conforms with the setback requirement?
It conforms with the setback requirement, yes. And originally, we were gonna make the loft area larger, and the idea was to try to make the house look a little bit more airy and open. And that's why we suggested having the balcony there, keeping the roof where it is, but keeping that open airiness and not necessarily needing the larger loft area. The Isgats have a lot of kids and a lot of family and a lot of nieces and nephews, and they just have a very large family. So we wanted to try to accommodate a house that, you know, that they can have family over. And having that open area is a great place for the kids to hang out or study when they get older, whatever it is.
Okay. And with respect to the balcony, if that were an enclosed area, that would be in conformance with the zone, or with the ordinance, correct?
That's correct. Because it's beyond that front yard setback.
So in your interpretation of the ordinance and our discussions, it's our belief that also this covered balcony would also conform because it conforms to the setback, is that correct?
That's correct.
And is the covered balcony either a use or an activity?
No, it is not. In my opinion, it's not.
And could it be called something else besides a covered balcony?
It could be a covered porch. It could be... It could be called whatever you want to call it, I guess. A terrace, covered terrace.
But the bottom line is, what we're proposing conforms with the setback.
That's correct. That was the intent. When we, you know, when we sat down with this design, we really set forth to design a house that can form. You know, we try to push our clients to, you know, stay within envelopes and work with what the local zoning is.
And if you were to put a porch above a porch, according to the ordinance, it would have to be open if it was in that front yard setback area?
That's correct, yeah.
But we're not proposing that?
That's correct.
Okay.
In fact, when we originally started the design, there were some interpretation, you know, confusions. And once we got you on board, we wound up making a change. The balcony was actually sticking out a foot past that setback line. We actually pushed it back before we even decided to make an application, just because we wanted to make sure we were in conformance.
Okay. So that addresses, in Mr. Avakian's, I'm sorry, in Mr. Frida's letter, that addresses Section A3, correct?
Yes, it does.
And then with respect to Sections A1 and A2, my apologies. With respect to Sections A1 and A2, we are proposing A1, a conforming setback for both the porch as well as the dwelling, is that correct?
That's correct. So again, the idea for the rear porch is they are gonna pull their car in into the driveway, and they're gonna come out and they're gonna get, and come in the back door to, you know, go into the kitchen if they're coming from the beach or something. The idea is, again, they have a large family. If it's raining, they all kind of want to huddle up on the deck. We created this small, little porch, it's only four foot wide, about 12 foot long, with the four-foot-wide steps coming up from the patio in the back. And the idea, again, was have everybody come up, huddle up underneath there and with their groceries, whatever they have, and then head into the house. This way, they were covered, they can wipe their feet, snow, rain, that sort of thing. And again, it also helps to break up the architecture on the outside of the house, so it's not a big square box.
And that's solely to access the first floor, correct?
It's only to access the first floor, correct?
So it's not access to an upper story where there are some other considerations in the ordinance, it's strictly the first floor?
Just the first floor.
And again, that roof, let's go back to the new A1. And that area that you show there, showing the railing and the steps and everything, that roof, again, we show some, you show some dashed lines or dash lines going vertically?
Correct. So the dash line that's just beyond that four-foot overhang is the rear yard setback of 25 feet. So we are within that by approximately six inches.
Meaning, you're not into the setback, you're actually...
We're outside of the setback.
You're in the building envelope?
That's correct.
Okay. And the porch, for the most part itself, it looks like the porch, other than a couple of steps, are in that building envelope as well, correct?
Correct. And in fact, I wouldn't really even consider it a true porch, because it's only four foot wide. It's really more of just a rear deck to access the house with the steps going up to it.
Okay. So in your interpretation of the ordinance, because we're not into that setback area, this is really not even a variance condition?
I, we didn't know this, we didn't consider this to be a variance issue when we were working it. I mean, this is, again, one of the things that we said, you know, they wanted to, they wanted to have a smaller deck and a bigger patio. So we always, from day one, just said, let's just go with a four-foot deck to get you down to grade.
Okay. And with respect to the rest of the building, the building envelope conforms to the percentages, the maximum percentages for building coverage?
Building coverage, impervious coverage, all conform with the zone and the lot size, yes.
Okay. And would you agree with Scott's testimony, looking at the area that there's really no property to acquire from any of the neighbors to make their lot larger?
I would agree with him on that. And even though, you know, the lot that is on the left-hand side is a little bit larger, it's a corner lot. So that makes it even worse for them. So really, I didn't see any, any conditions. You know, again, just looking at this application, you know, we look at this as, the benefits of this outweighed any detriments that may come up.
And the design for the front of the home as well as the porch into the setback, that all conforms with setback requirements as well?
Yeah. And in fact, from the front view elevation, you can see that dash dotted line coming down that are front setback, average front yard setback, where that covered balcony, covered porch is within the building envelope.
Okay. And you've also reviewed Mr. Frida's letter, particularly Section Number Four, the general comments?
We did, yes.
And you spoke into the Isgats about that as well?
We, I did. And we didn't see any issues with it. And not to speak for them, but they agreed.
So a condition of any approval, you'd have no issues with adding those things to the plans and...
No, absolutely.
Okay. And just to confirm, Mr. Isgat, you agree to that as well in Section Number Four about the general comments?
Yes, I agree, we agree.
Okay. That is the testimony I have for Mr. Kyler.
Any on the board have any questions? Any on the board, anybody, general public have questions for the...
Excuse me. Before you do that, Chairman, it's Jerry. I do have a question. This is for the architect.
Yes.
And I'm looking at the engineering plans, so I know the engineer's not here. But they're calling the finished floor elevation on the first sheet of the engineer's plans at elevation 107.59. The grades on a property are at like elevation 100. I think something's wrong there, because I don't think you're proposing the building to be seven feet higher than grade.
No, that must have been a typo. If you look at the front elevation, if you want, I can share my screen again.
No, I got it. I just want to make sure that I'm reading it right.
Yeah. There was an initial plan that we had done... Yeah. I, there was an initial plan that we had done before we even got into it and the engineer had set that that marker and we went back and forth and we wound up changing it.
Okay. And so that, I think what it is, is instead of 107.58, it should be 102.58. And then it matches your plan.
Yep, correct.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And I would like to make a comment that it's nice to get plans submitted to the board, even though it's an undersized lot barely, and they did a good job working with all the variances and things. So that was a positive. I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, anybody else on the board? Anybody from the general public have a question to the architect? Questions only. Back to you, Mr. Beekman.
Thank you. I guess.
Harvey, Bill Shook has his hand raised.
Okay, Mr. Shook. Put your, unmute yourself. Mr. Shook, unmute yourself.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to reach the arrow there.
You got it.
As far as the architectural drawings, I'm looking at that. And I'm looking at a seven foot six ceiling height. Now, before you said that there was an unfinished attic that may be used for, as a two and a half story, so I'm looking at possibly two more bedrooms up there. And we're showing a master bedroom on the first floor, a master bedroom on the second floor on your drawings. I'm counting six bedrooms. Is that, is that correct? Possibly?
The definite, the plans meet, the the design meets the definition of what a finished attic is.
The house has a potential for six bedrooms.
It does, but it doesn't because you need to meet the light and air requirements. So you have to have a certain amount of windows per the square footage of a room.
Doesn't the, doesn't the attic have that?
It does when you take into account the stair windows now with it all open. But if you were to block that off and create separate rooms, then you would be blocking that natural light coming in and you wouldn't meet the requirements. You'd only have that one window. Plus, they're not egress windows. So legally, you couldn't do it.
Okay. Just a question.
Yep, no. Good question. Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? No question?
Mr. Colian has his hand up.
Go on.
Mr. Keeler, the, the current ordinance would allow you to build an uncovered porch over the front, uncovered deck over the front porch, would it not?
Yes, you could. The ordinance says you could do an uncovered deck over the front porch. But we don't, we don't want to build over the front porch. We wanted to keep the roof lines.
So you feel your design is less intrusive than that? Is that correct?
Yeah. With, if you added a deck, you'd be making that front seem taller.
So you feel this is a higher design standard?
In my opinion.
Wait, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions in public? Now it's back to you, Mr. Beekman.
I see Hannah, Mr. Gertis.
Still a question?
I just had a quick question. Two questions, actually.
What's your address, sir?
With a.
Mr. Gertis, what's your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. 414 Lorraine Avenue.
Go ahead.
So the questions were, with the house going from one to three stories, my concern was, and I don't know if it's valid, I put solar panels on my house. Is that going to be a blocking to my light coming from the east? Am I losing half the daylight? Am I going to be in the shadows for half the day or? Because, you know, I put a lot of money into a solar panel so I could not pay a lot for electricity. And and I understand they work much less efficiently when you have shadows. My other question, though, was, and I'll leave it to whoever can answer best. My other question was, I've seen other places where houses were built and neighbors got water in their basement. Now, I don't have water in my basement. I don't want it. I don't think that's going to happen, but, you know, I'm just putting it out there. And I'll save my comments for the end.
All right. So those are questions that perhaps the architect can answer.
So as far as the sunlight goes, without actually doing a sun study, I can't give a hundred percent answer. We do meet the height requirement and there are no gables or dormers on his side of the roof. The roof is gabled, so the the peak is actually back a little bit further, you know, towards the center of the home. So when the sun comes up, in my opinion, there should be no blockage of of his solar panels. Again, that's, we do meet the requirements for height.
And as far as flooding?
As far as flooding, we will work with the engineer and the builder when we put our construction drawings together to make sure that the, all the water and runoff is, you know, pitched out to where it needs to go and not towards his property.
Thank you.
And Eric, you'd be required to do that anyways, as a condition of the construction plans, correct?
That's correct.
And you'd have to submit a grading plan, which actually is one of the general comments we'd have to submit.
Yep.
One other question. What is the height of the peak elevation, you know?
The peak is 134.6 feet.
And what's the approximate height of the, I guess it will be the top of the second floor, maybe where those gutters are, if you're looking at the right side elevation?
So the building height is 34.85 feet. You're probably, again, just looking at this, 121. I can give you exact, hold on. 22 feet.
And what's the, what's the pitch of the roof?
The pitch of the roof is, it's, it's 10 and a half on 12.
So it's a pretty, pretty steep pitch?
It's a steeper pitch.
Okay. So for for the sunlight question with a steep pitch like that, it avoids a lot of the issues when you're, especially when you're conforming.
Exactly. Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now it's back to you, Mr. Beekman.
I don't have any other witnesses, so if you want to have public comment, then I will make my comments about both the appeal as well as the variances.
First, any in the board have any comments?
Danny?
What?
I don't see anyone with their hands raised.
Anybody in the general public have comments? Mr. Gertis?
Hello.
You gotta, wait, now you gotta be sworn in.
Okay. So there's somebody on the phone trying to get in, but I don't know if they're able to.
Okay, well, let's just worry about you right now, okay?
Okay.
So state your name and address and we'll raise your right hand, please, and I'll swear you in.
Okay, Dwight Gertis, 414 Lorraine Avenue.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceed. I just wanted to make the comment that Scott and Enza have been excellent neighbors. I'm sure they're going to do the right thing. I just wanted to put my two cents in and I, you know, I just wanted to make sure that those two issues that I raised were, you know, looked at. But I, I think, you know, I want to be a good neighbor and I think they want to be good neighbors too. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment?
Mr. Colian has his hand raised.
Thomas J. Coann, 123rd Avenue.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
It's very refreshing to have someone come in with an undersized lot and really read the ordinance book before they designed it. The professionals did an excellent job of really looking out for the ordinances, which in my mind is also looking out for the residents of Bradley Beach. It's a very thoughtful design and I appreciate the professionals going that extra yard and not asking for multiple variances. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else want to make a comment?
I guess Bill Shook.
Yes, yes.
Great, great.
I believe this project is going to enhance the neighborhood.
Mr. Shook.
Name, address, and swear you in.
William Shook, 110 Fifth Avenue, Bradley Beach.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
I do. Like I was saying, this project will enhance the neighborhood immensely. And, you know, for an undersized lot, they did do a great job on keeping all the variances down to just about nothing. But what I would like to have is the Board of Adjustment request that the utilities, such as the electric, the cable, the telephone, be placed underground since the telephone pole is directly across from them. I mean, it's no big deal, you know, right in front of the house, the pole. So if I could have the Board of Adjustment make that recommendation, thank you.
Mr. Beekman, did you hear that question?
I did hear that question and I don't think I can consent to that request. I mean, you know, the applicants have a right to utilize the utilities based upon what's permitted. And they're going to comply with what's permitted.
Any other questions? Any other comments from the public? Chris, anybody else on?
Don't, just give me one second. I can't fit everybody on one screen. I don't see anyone else.
Thank you. Would you like to sum up, Mr. Beekman?
Thank you. So the nature of our application really is twofold. The zoning officer brought up four issues. The first issue is the issue of the balcony. And it's our, our opinion and position that the balcony is not a variance condition. And we would ask that the board rule on that. And the reason why we say that is because the variance condition would only apply if you had a covered roof above the, the porch below and that covered roof was within the setback area. We're proposing a covered balcony, covered porch, covered terrace that meets the setback requirements. And it's not what what the zoning officer cited was, a use or activity not permitted cannot, cannot be constructed. Well, this is an architectural feature. This is not a use, this is not an activity. It's part of the incidental structure of the home. And if the Isgets decided they wanted to enclose it, it would be completely conforming according to the ordinance. So we would ask that the board make a determination and on the appeal that that is not a variance condition. And I think that's important for the board as well for two reasons. One is, the first reason is if you are interpreting your ordinance, future applicants should be able to take your interpretation and then utilize that. The second, I think, more important issue is the fact that if you're granting a variance as opposed to interpreting the ordinance the way it's intended to be interpreted, the variance actually runs with the land. And there's, there's less control down the road on the property than you would if you interpreted the ordinance that this non-invasive balcony that doesn't go into the setback area is conforming. I have basically that same argument for the appeal related to the rear covered porch or deck there. So it's the same argument. We're not proposing anything that is into a setback area. And the ordinance section that your zoning officer cites, and it's, unfortunately, it's not the first time he cited this. But the the ordinance section that he cites deals with encroachments into the setback area. Well, because we're not encroaching into the setback area, it doesn't trigger the violation of not having, not being permitted to have a roof over that covered deck. If the Isgets were proposing an architectural feature that went into the setback area, then I would agree, it needs a variance. But that's not what we're proposing here. And I think unfortunately, the zoning officer's decision has hamstrung not only the Isgets, not only my prior clients that we represented back in April, but it's also going to hamstring future applicants before the board, forcing people to come to the board as opposed to be able to move forward and constructing what they should be able to construct on their site within these, within the boundary lines of the setback lines that are permitted. I'm not going to get into, I'm going to ask for a variance for the lot size because it is a lot size issue as well as the lot width. I don't want to get into the, the nitty gritty of the details related to that. But I would ask that the board make a determination separately on the balcony, separately on the the rear porch, the rear covered porch. And then alternatively, if they agree with your zoning officer, we're asking for a variance for those because we don't believe there is a significant impact on neighbors, on air light, on any of the master plan requirements, as well as we have situations where I think it's, I think it's clear, it makes sense that someone has a little bit of a porch over their entryway to the first floor. So when they're fiddling with their keys, they're putting groceries in, they're carrying their kids in, they're not stuck in the rain or the snow or the sleet or whatever it might be in our beautiful Garden State. So I would ask that the board consider each one of those. And alternatively, if you don't agree with my argument on the two appeal items, that you would issue in variance in lieu of. Thank you.
Yeah, so I would welcome any, as far as the appeal of the zoning officer's decision on the two matters, the balcony and the the rear porch. I would ask if the, our planner or engineer have any comments regarding that.
Mr. Green?
I don't disagree with what Mr. Beekman has brought forward. The ordinances in Bradley Beach right now don't truly cover the issue with the rear porch. However, if it's roofed, it's part of the building and has to be included in the building coverage. And as long as it's not in the setback and it's of a proper size and height, where it's just getting you from the ground floor of your home down to the ground floor of its surroundings, then it really should not need a variance, provided it's not in the setback area. As far as, what was the other one here? Oh, the balcony. I don't see that as needing a variance either in this case because it's within the building envelope. It's not projected over the side of the building. It's completely within the, if you ran the wall straight up as both the architect and attorney said for the client, you could easily build walls straight up and have usable space. So I would agree on both counts in this case.
Mr. Chairman, we have, we've had testimony in support of the fact that in the applicant's case in chief, that the balcony and the rear porch do not trigger a variance. And Mr. Frida, her board engineer, concurs with that testimony. So ultimately, the decision rests with the board, but you've, you've had professional advice as to how to interpret that ordinance. So if the board were to agree and follow the professionals' advice, I think it would be in order to deal with both the balcony and the rear porch together, because I think it's, you know, it's consistent that if it's, if it's, if one is that part, one is not a variance, the other one isn't either. And, you know, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion on that issue. And then if the board agrees that the zoning officer's decision should be overturned, then we will move on to the two, the two variances.
Anybody, anybody from the board? Because I agree with Mr. Beekman, Mr. Kittredge, and Mr. Frida in a situation that we should make a motion to go against, to say that the ISGS do not need a variance to build those two ports.
So if you agreed with Mr. Beekman's presentation, then it would be affirming the appeal of the zoning officer.
Can I make a motion that we affirm the decision of the zoning officer?
Appeal, appeal. Appeal of the zoning officer.
The appeal of the zoning officer. Zoning just.
Second.
Kristi?
Yep. Mr. Cattelli?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
I'm muted.
Mr. Wade?
I'm muted.
You're muted. Yes?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, based on the arguments of both Mr. Beekman and engineering report, engineering interpretation that is within the setbacks, I totally agree that no variance is required.
Chair Rosenberg?
And I also made my statement before. I agree also with the statements that were made. So, so that means.
That passes the, the appeal has been affirmed. And as I say it, and Mr. Beekman, please correct me, affirm one, we have then two variance issues. One has to do with lot size and lot width.
Yes, and the arguments there obviously is Mr. ISGS testified to is the lot is an existing lot, it's been around for a long time, there's no property that they can acquire from any of the surrounding lots and they're stuck with a building envelope that's limited to the forty-seven by a hundred square feet and forty-seven, forty-seven hundred square feet plus or minus, as well as the deficient lot width of forty-seven point oh four square feet where fifty feet is required. So we would ask, based upon conditions that are uncontrollable for the applicants, that this variance be permitted, especially considering they're constructing a dwelling that is solely within all of the building envelope requirements.
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance based on the permitted use and size of 412 Lorraine Avenue, Bradley Beach, Lot 35, Lot 25.
Yep. Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Cattelli?
Yes, I think it would be an improvement to the neighborhood and add to the tax base to the town. Hopefully stabilize the town as well. But I think it's a very good addition. A lot of thought was put into it. And I wish you folks best of luck with it.
Mr. Afuso?
I vote yes. I'd like to echo Mr. Frida's comments. Very rarely do people come to the board so thoughtfully to have their plans in such a way that we have minimal variances. So congratulations. Great project. Good luck with it.
Wade?
I vote yes. Good luck with the project.
Mr. Mayor?
I vote yes. I think it's wonderful that the plans were thoughtful and well-designed and met the town, the intention of, the intent of zoning. Really appreciate it. Looks great.
And Chair Rosenberg?
I also vote yes. And I do appreciate the ingots and Mr. Beekman and the architect for working with the board to make life easy. Good luck.
May I ask a question? Who seconded? And you catch who seconded?
The mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Next case. Levine Residence, Block 48, Lot 2, 413 Brinley Avenue, represented by Mark R. Akins Esquire. Mr. Akins.
Sorry, Akins, you're muted. I'm mute.
You're muted.
How's that?
There we go.
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Mark Akins, on behalf of the applicants, Dr. and Mrs. Levine. This is a proposal to demolish an existing two-family residence and construct a new single-family residence in its place with attached garage. The proposal also includes retaining the existing garage apartment in the rear. There will be some testimony this evening that there are, there will be some modifications to the plan based upon conversations I've had with one neighbor to the rear, that's Mr. McAllister, and the attorney for, for the neighbor on the Easterly side, the attorney is Charles Shaw, and the neighbor is Mr. Daniels. So we'll have some testimony with regard to some modifications there per the request of Mr. McAllister. With me this evening is William Scharfenberg, the project manager, and Matthew Wilder, the project engineer and a licensed planner as well, and the owner, Dr. and Mrs., owner's Dr. and Mrs. Levine. So I don't know, Mr. Kittredge, if you give a jurisdictional statement as to the adequacy of service.
Yeah, the, the board accepts jurisdiction, Mr. Akins.
Thank you very much. Shall I swear all, do you swear all the witnesses or just?
Yeah, so if, so are both your clients going to be testifying or?
I think that they'll just give, I think that the, the primary witnesses will be Mr. Scharfenberg as the project manager and then Mr. Wilder as the project engineer and licensed planner. Dr. and Mrs. Levine are available for any comments the board may have with regard to existing conditions at the site, but I had not had them as part of my presentation.
Okay, that's fine. So Mr. Wilder and Mr. Scharfenberg, unmute yourselves, please, and along with Ms. Bell and Mr. Frida. If you'd raise, each raise your right hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Thank you, chairman. Mr. Scharfenberg, are you familiar with this project?
Yes, I am.
And can you review with the board a little bit of your, your background and how you come to be the project manager for this project?
Sure. My name is Bill Scharfenberg. I'm the owner of Beacon Homes in New Jersey. I've been in business as a registered new home builder for approximately twenty years, also a home improvement contractor. I had built a home for a friend of the Levesens in Seaside Park. Built along the coast, anywhere from South Seaside Park, Seaside Park, Lavalette, up the coast to Spring Lake Heights, Avon, and renovated homes in Bradley Beach. They, they spoke to me after seeing their friend's home and they were looking for a piece of property in Bradley. And we looked at a couple lots with houses on them. Either they didn't work or they were outbid on other projects. And then they found this property and the nice thing about this one was it's, it was a bigger lot than they were coming across. It had the advantage of the rear apartment to help handle some of the costs. What they proposed, when they talked to me, was they wanted to build a new single-family home, take down the two-family. You know, they want a modern home that they can use as their primary residence and also, you know, they also have another home out of state that they spend a lot of the winter at. The attached garage was important to them so they could pull into the garage and go right into the house. They also were looking for a house that had a nice front porch so it would be consistent with the neighborhood. So we, when we designed the house with Ken Krasinski, the architect, who couldn't be here this evening because he had another obligation, we designed the porch similar to the other homes on the street. There's, there's a limited rear yard here because of the back apartment. So what we tried to do was find another place for, for them to enjoy the backyard. And the way to do that was we put the deck on top of the garage in the back. So that was one of the things that they liked about the idea. They wanted to retain the garage apartment, obviously provides a source of income to them. I know they want to clean it up a little bit. It's, you know, it's from probably nineteen twenties or older than that. It needs a little bit of work around the perimeter. So I know that they're willing to do that and remove a shed in the process. That's a little bit about the project. As I've been involved, it's going to be on a basement, on a superior wall, concrete insulated basement.
No further questions of Mr. Scharfenberg, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody from the board have questions? Not at this point. Anybody from the general public have questions?
Mr. Cohen has his hand up.
Mr. Cohen?
Thomas J. Cohen, 612 Third Avenue. Mr. Scharfenberg, you said that the, some of the lots you looked at didn't work. Did you factor in the garage apartment when you were calculating this one?
The garage apartment was pre-existing. So we tried to cut coverage to the extent that we could in order to accommodate the, what they wanted in the house was a four-bedroom, three bedrooms up, one bedroom down, and then have a two-car garage for them to park. In order for the driveway to get around the back of the house, we had to, we basically ran it back in the same location that the original driveway was in. But we decided instead of doing a full concrete drive there, we did concrete strips so we could add more grass to that area.
Is there a way to build a conforming house on this lot?
Sure, there's a way to build a conforming house.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, maybe a misunderstanding, but they said that they wanted to rent out the back garage apartment, but they want to put a balcony on it for their use. I don't understand how they'd be using a balcony if they were renting the property out.
Maybe I can assist. There is an existing garage apartment in the rear of the property. Other than some cosmetic improvements to the back of the garage apartment and removing the shed, there'll be no change to that. The new single-family residence that's proposed has an attached garage. It's that attached garage that's proposed to have the deck above it.
So there's going to be two garages on this property?
The garage apartment does not have a garage function. It's a residence.
But a garage apartment is supposed to have.
Upstairs and down?
Is the garage apartment two stories?
Maybe we could get, Bill, do you have the, that answer?
I do. I do. The, the rear, the rear building appears that it was once a garage underneath. But at the present time, and based on all the prior COs that we reviewed, there's no garage in that back building. It's merely an apartment at this point in time.
So it's one two-story apartment?
Correct.
In the rear of the building?
Yes.
I have a question.
That, to me, is a lot of residents, too many bedrooms in that property.
Well, if I may, this is Jerry. Maybe we, maybe we can get some testimony about what is in the garage apartment in the back. Is there living space on both floors? How many bedrooms? How many bathrooms? That type of thing. That might help the board with their decision.
Mr. Scharfenberg, can you add to those facts a little bit, please?
Yes, I can. I reviewed the certificate of occupancy for that rear dwelling and it's a two-bedroom.
That's not true. On one floor or two floors?
I can confidently answer that question.
I can. You will. You can?
Well, I, I think we need presentation from the applicant and not maybe someone else that might be familiar with the building. We were hopeful that we could get that information. Maybe the Levesens have that, but it is something that we'd like to know.
Right, we did ask for that in our letter. Actually, I think it would be very beneficial just to understand what is in that apartment to the rear since you are asking for a use variance for two dwellings on one lot.
We're asking for the use variance, but we're actually removing one of the existing three residential uses. So we're decreasing the intensity of the use at the site.
You still need a use variance.
Understood, understood and agreed, right. And I don't think we have a problem providing conceptual floor plans for the board's benefit. But whatever the, whatever the current CO provides for, no changes are proposed in connection with that rear structure. So the status quo will remain the status quo. But certainly, we want to answer that for the board and get the board that information. It's the new structure that we're, you know, that we're going to be focusing on this evening. But certainly, we can get that information for the board as well.
Well, who can testify to that?
Do you have anybody there?
I see Dr. Levine's trying to unmute his screen.
Now we got it.
Okay. Swear him in, Mr. Kittredge?
Sure. So if you would state your name and your address, then I'll swear you in, sir.
Alan Levine, I live at 2532 Woodland Avenue, South Plainfield. But we own and want to move to 413 Brinley Avenue.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Akins?
Okay, good evening, Dr. Levine.
Also, she knows a lot of the answers, too.
Big pardon?
And you swear my wife also, she knows a lot of the information on it also.
Sure. So once again, state your name and address and raise your right hand, please.
It's Marilyn Levine, 413 Brinley Avenue. I'm not Bradley Beach.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dr. or Mrs. Levine, if you could share with the board a little bit about the floor plan at the garage apartment and describe the different rooms on the first and the second floor respectively.
Okay, when we purchased it, it was originally, it was a garage that had been converted into what we were told was a two-bedroom apartment. As you enter the building, there's a downstairs floor which contains a bedroom. Then there is a utility room there and also another little area with laundry and a tiny little area that could be used, they called it a bonus room, it could be used as an office or something. You go up the stairs, there's one bathroom in the entire unit, one bathroom, full bath, with a stall shower, no tub. There's a kitchen up there, one bedroom, and then there's a living room and a porch that is a dining room. So it's basically two bedrooms, it could be used as two bedrooms and it has one full bath.
So it's a, it's a garage apartment that's been converted to a two-story living?
That's correct.
Instead of a garage apartment, which it should be.
Well, I don't know. That's how it was when we bought it and.
It's, it's apparently, it's apparently a prior existing non-conforming use for which a CO has been issued. For which COs over the years have been issued, as I understand.
Mr. Kittredge, I have a question for you. Mr. Kittredge, when they demolished the front house, doesn't everything go away and we have to start over again?
No, when they're, so the application, as I understand it, is that they're looking to retain the use in that garage apartment. They are demolishing the front home and looking for approval for that. But since you have multiple structures on one, on more than one dwelling on the property, they require a use variance. So that's what's triggering the use variance.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
Yeah, hand up.
From the board, Kristi?
Bridget has a hand up. Bridget?
Yeah, she's, Bridget's in the public. Are we finished with the board questions?
Someone on the board? Mr. Mike?
I'll hold off for a second.
Okay. Let's go to the public. Who is on? Kristi? Bridget? Oh, Rafat Kaplan. Unmute yourself.
Well, wait for Bridget.
Okay.
One, one second. Okay, there you go.
Bridget's first.
Yes.
Question.
Bridgette McGuire, six ten Brinley Avenue. Has it been considered to turn the back house that exists there into a two-car garage on the bottom and leave a one-bedroom apartment upstairs, which then would conform to the ordinance?
Well, the, the structure, the structure validly exists as a prior existing non-conforming use now, so there's no proposal to change that. The proposal is to eliminate the two-family and make that a single-family.
Right, but then to add two garage apartments, that, two garages attached to the house, that's why I'm asking, so if the, if the couple wants to have two-car garages and build them new, they could build them in the back on the bottom and just leave the top as a conforming one-bedroom apartment. I was just asking if that's been considered.
That's, that's not an option that the applicant's pursuing. You'll hear testimony from the planner when we get to Mr. Wilder's testimony that providing a garage, providing the garage as proposed is helpful for a couple of reasons. Number one, it gets cars off the street and allows for off-street parking to meet the residential site improvement standard requirement of four spaces, which is met with this application. And secondly, to the extent that there's additional storage room in the garage, it allows items that would otherwise be in a yard to be stored in the garage, which is a better aesthetic result. So that's something that Mr. Wilder will be testifying to momentarily.
Okay, and the other question I have, well, two other questions. So if, if it was considered what I mentioned, it actually would provide more lot for, more cars for parking if the new two garages didn't have to be put up. So wouldn't that be more parking spots if you didn't have to build the two new garages and use the back as garages?
I think the applicants anticipate that the four spaces and, four spaces on the property would be sufficient without having to have more than four. So two in the garage and two in the driveway would be sufficient.
Okay, and then my other question is, the upstairs of that back house, should that be converted to a one-bedroom with the garages underneath? What would be the square footage of that upstairs back house? Is that known?
Doctor, Mrs. Levine, do you know the square footage of the upper floor of the garage apartment?
No, I don't.
No, but can I add something?
You're testifying.
Sure.
Okay, okay. First of all, we have tenants in there that we do not want to displace. They would have nowhere to go, they would have to look for another apartment, they've been there almost a year now, and I would not want to displace them, number one. Number two, it would be an added expense to demolish that building and start all over again if the garage is there. This is not a garage, has not been a garage for many, many years, and you know, it's not an option that we really choose to explore at this point in time. And also, as elderly people, we would like to have our garage attached to our home to, for security reasons, for safety reasons, and also to stay out of the elements when the weather's not good.
And how deep is the lot? Is it one-fifty or is it larger than one-fifty?
It's one-fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Mr.?
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes, hi, Rafat Kaplan, four oh nine Brinley Avenue. I'm two doors down from the home. My question, what is the elevation and the square footage of this second floor deck that will be above the garage?
Mr. Kaplan, if you could please hold your question, I'm going to have some supplemental testimony by the engineer and planner that may help impact, so just so we don't have to visit the issue twice, if that's okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had somebody with their hand raised, but they put their hand down, so I'm assuming they no longer have a question.
Okay, continue, Ms. Aikens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant now calls Matthew Wilder.
And Mr. Aikens, just before we go any further, just, I just want to get this on the record. You understand we have six members this evening.
I do, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Matthew Wilder, W-I-L-D-E-R. I am Department Manager for Morgan Engineering. I have not had the pleasure to testify in Bradley Beach previously. Just so my credentials very quickly, I am a licensed professional engineer in New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. I am a certified floodplain manager, a certified municipal engineer, and I'm also licensed as a professional planner. I have testified throughout the state, across probably thirty boards, but we are based just outside of Tom's River, so the majority of my testimony has really been in Mammoth Counties.
Okay. Continue.
Will you accept his qualifications, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Wilder, please.
Sure. So I think it might be beneficial, just a very quickly, just run through the variances that we're being sought this evening. We do have some changes we're making, and we're actually going to be eliminating two of the variances. So I think it might be beneficial to sort of start in that fashion. So the first variance that we are seeking, obviously, is the D-one use variance. As Mr. Aikens had indicated, there's currently three dwellings on the property, the existing two-family, and then the, the rear apartment. We will be reducing, eliminating the two-family, replacing with a single-family, but we still are requiring the use variance. The next variance we are seeking is maximum building coverage. Thirty-five percent is permitted, and we are proposing thirty-nine point five percent. Mr. Frida had calculated impervious coverage to be slightly over forty percent. We had recalculated the numbers, and the existing shed that is on the back of the apartment will be eliminated. So again, the, the proposed impervious cover, excuse me, the proposed building coverage is thirty-nine point five percent. We're also requesting a variance for minimum distance between structures. Between that rear apartment and the proposed garage, we have slightly over fourteen feet, fourteen point three feet proposed, and twenty feet is required. The next variance we're seeking is the driveway side yard setback, so three feet is required and one point six feet is proposed. As Mr. Scharfenberg had indicated, we are proposing the, the concrete sort of runway style drag strip driveway. There was an additional variance outlined for driveway material, as we had a parking area for that rear apartment that was going to be gravel. The proposal will be replacing that gravel with porous pavers. We'll also be proposing porous pavers in front of the proposed two-car garage. So we are no longer requesting that variance. Just to quickly summarize how that rear parking will work, as that was a question in Mr. Frida's letter. That gravel is actually gonna, the parking area is going to slightly be adjusted. We're going to provide two parking spaces, front to back, on the side of the garage near the apartment, and that will provide for two off-street parking spaces. In total, I estimate this property will probably have six to seven, support for six to seven vehicles between that, that area, the proposed two-car garage, and then the driveway strips that are posed on the side of the property, but it will certainly comply with the requirement of two parking spaces per unit. The beyond that, the other planned change that we had discussed about making is, and it was related to a concern from a neighbor, is reducing the size of the deck over top of the proposed garage. Previously was proposed, or currently, it was proposed that the rooftop deck on the garage would occupy the entirety of the garage. There were some concerns about, about that sort of operation from some neighbors. So what we had agreed to do is recess or inset that deck using some architectural parapet walls to reduce the size of that rooftop deck, and also to move it further from that property line. So that rooftop deck would be twenty-three feet by seventeen and a half feet. So before I sort of delve into the specifics related to the variances.
Did you say seventeen feet by?
Twenty-three feet by seventeen and a half feet.
Thank you.
And it will be shrinking away from the apartment, and then also away from Lot Three, which is to the east, I believe. Yes, to the east. So-
What will the revised setback be in terms of the minimum distance between the garage apartment and the, end of the detached, excuse me, attached garage?
So the, the, we will be shortening it, the deck five feet in both directions. So right now, the deck would, the deck would be an additional five feet from that garage apartment. So instead of being fourteen point three, it would be just about nineteen point three feet. And then from the eastern property line, it's currently, the deck, the garage is currently set back five point one feet. When we further set the deck back in five feet, it would be set back ten point one feet from that eastern property line.
Well, the garage we set back to, or just the deck?
Ju- just the rooftop deck. At this moment, we are leaving the garage as it's currently constituted, and like I said, constructing sort of an architectural parapet wall to, to recess or inset the, the garage deck.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilder, if the, if the garage apartment, the secondary structure, if that was reconstructed to be a conforming structure, how many of these variances would go away?
So that would eliminate the use variance.
What about the, what about the setback, the, the building-to-building setback, as well as the lot coverage?
If we eliminated that rear apartment entirely?
No, if, if it was, if it was configured, then it would be conforming. Six hundred square feet upstairs, parking downstairs.
Right, so from a, from a building coverage standpoint, we would still have the same amount of building coverage. So the footprint of that structure occupies six hundred and forty square feet, so that wouldn't necessarily reduce the overall building coverage for the, for the property. And then the, again, the, the garage is not being reduced in size, just the deck, so we would still have just over fourteen feet from the garage to the apartment. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not actually changing the setback between the two buildings. We're, we're just insetting the deck to increase the separation from the deck to that apartment.
But, but couldn't you theoretically, from, from, and again, my, my reading of plans is rudimentary, couldn't you theoretically make the garage apartment fatter? Which would drag the front of it backward, which would create more distance between the front house and the back house?
So I tried to take a look at some aerial imagery to try to determine when these structures were built. I'm, I'm able, and the tax record, I think, say nineteen twenty-nine, the, the main structure was built, but I'm able to discern both structures from aerial imagery back to as late as nineteen forty. My hunch is that, and I'm sure as most members of the borough are aware, the minute you start sort of attempting to modify that rear structure based on the construction standards that was employed in almost a hundred years ago, I think you'd have some, some difficulty with, with adjusting the shape. To answer your question, i- in order to increase that separation to twenty feet, the, the only logical solution would be to really reduce the size of the garage. I don't think you'd really be able to amend or, or reconstruct that rear, that rear building.
Mr. Frida, what do you think? I think you're, where you're going is proper in at least asking the question. Okay. And, and that is the million-dollar question here. The concession made on the, on the rooftop deck of the garage is a good one because it pulls the outdoor living space away from its neighbors, and maybe even provide some extra visual protection. Because I noticed the neighbor to the left has an outdoor shower in the back corner of their house, so I'm sure that was an issue. The only way that the applicant could conform to what you're asking is that they would have to basically knock the whole building down in the rear of the building and build it so that they could get the extra six feet. That could be done, but it is a cost that I'm not sure the applicant's looking to take on.
And Mr. Frida, to echo your comments, so the, these revisions to the garage, the attached garage decking are as a result of my conversation today with Charles Shaw, the attorney for Mr. Daniels, the property owner on the east. We had also agreed in that conversation, I confirmed it by email to him with a copy to Mr. Kittredge, that we would provide for a row of six-feet-tall arborvitae plantings along the east side of the proposed garage as well. And obviously, that'll provide a nice green screen as they mature over, over time. They're fairly quick growers, as I understand it. I, I think maybe the board's focus would be helped, I haven't discussed this with the client, so you know, it would be subject to my, having the opportunity to review it with the client, but I think the focus would be rather than tearing down the, the detached garage apartment, the focus would be on trying to redesign the attached garage with its current width, the twenty-eight feet. So I think the delta's somewhere around five and a half feet, if I've got my math right. If that could be reduced in width, if you will, meaning from north to south, by about five and a half feet, then I think we, we would eliminate the minimum distance variance, and I don't know, Mr. Wilder, to what extent we would correspondingly reduce the maximum building coverage from the thirty-nine point five that's proposed, closer to the thirty-five percent that's permitted. So I don't mean to put you on the spot with the calculation, but if you, if you are able to do that math, that might be helpful, because that would eliminate two of the variances, and we'd be left with talking about driveway materials and driveway setbacks, I think.
And the use variance.
Unless you have the use variance.
And the use variance, but ladies and gentlemen, I submit to you that the use variance should, should readily be one that could be approved, because you're going from three principal uses today to two, and that's a better result, a much better result than renovating the existing structure that's there, leaving all the conditions and having three principal uses. I think we, we should all be able to agree on that. From a planning standpoint, what the applicant is proposing is a much better result than what currently exists at the site. So what we really need to do is tweak some of these dimensions and try to address these variances, as I've suggested, if that makes sense.
I think we also need to hear some testimony as to how the application meets the proofs for D-one variance relief.
Right, we're, we're, yes, we're not quite at the, at the point where we've got proofs in, but yes, of course, we'll put the proofs in for our, you know, our record and for the board's consideration. So again, Mr. Wilder, while they're at the risk of putting you on the spot, are you able to do a little calculating and help me understand that if we reduce the width of the garage by about five and a half feet to therefore eliminate the minimum distance variance between the structures, what does that do correspondingly to the maximum building coverage?
It would reduce it by just about one point six percent, which would lower our proposal from thirty-nine point five percent to thirty-seven point nine percent.
Okay, thank you for that calculation.
What, what is that again? Thirty-seven?
So we're thirty-nine point five now, Mr. Kittredge, if we, if we reduce the width of the garage, of the garage, the attached garage from the proposed twenty-eight feet to twenty-eight point one feet to approximately five point five feet to meet the minimum distance setback of twenty feet between the structures, you'd wind up with a corresponding reduction from thirty-nine point five percent to thirty-seven point nine percent. Does, does get the applicant closer to the thirty-five percent.
Thank you.
I have a question, please? I'm concerned about whether the apartment, the existing apartment, which you're saying was built somewhere around nineteen forty, will actually even meet current codes in terms of getting a CO when all of this is finished?
Well, there is an existing CO that was issued by the, by the, you know, the code officer in Bradley Beach. The current tenant resides in the garage apartment pursuant to a valid C of O.
But that person doesn't own the apartment, doesn't the owner of the actual property have to get a CO when all the work is finished? For both, both-
No, because, no, because there, there won't be any work on the garage, on the detached garage apartment. The only work that's, the only work that's proposed is to re-side the southerly side of the garage apartment and remove the shed, and I don't believe that those require, help me out here, Mr. Wilder, but I don't believe that, that those two acts require a building permit.
Yeah, I believe so, no.
And therefore, the, the, no CO, no new CO would be required for the existing tenant in the- in the detached rear garage apartment.
I, I have a question, and you, you put it right, you call it a garage apartment. Garage apartment, based on code, is garage downstairs, utilities downstairs, one-bedroom upstairs, kitchen, living room, whatever. And so you, you're calling it something for use that you're not producing, you're producing an apartment, not a garage apartment. So I, I'm just, you, you're confusing yourself in your own testimony. So is it a garage apartment, an apartment? How do you want to continue it on? The borough, if you want to keep it, would like you to have it as a garage apartment, where the views is downstairs as a garage, where utilities, et cetera, and upstairs is living space. I think it's something you have to reconsider when, when, and you're changing the, the use of the lot.
It's identified on the plans as a two-story apartment, no changes proposed, and I apologize for using the wrong terminology. The application has, has proposed this evening, does not propose to change the use or the interior of the two-story detached apartment at the rear of the property, other than removing the shed, which is not part of that structure, and re-siteing the southerly portion of that building. It's a valid prior existing non-conforming use, and it may continue as a matter of law.
Okay, Mr. Alfi, so.
I, I don't want to waste everybody's time, I'm not prepared to vote for a use variance here. So, you know. Count your votes.
Mr. Cortelli?
Can I make a suggestion on the attached garage? We're talking about coverages. I'm looking at the plans, A3, A2, and A3. It's a two-door, two-car garage. Why not compact that garage into a double-door garage? And reduce the footprint, reduce the coverage, and still give the ability for two cars to get into a garage? You've got a, a, a center area of a few feet separating two garage doors. You could easily put a two-car garage door in there and compact that whole garage down a little bit to help cover, to help reduce the coverage and, and meet the concerns that are being voiced at this point in time.
I, I think that's a very fair suggestion.
Mr. Frida, is twenty feet enough room to turn back out of a garage, make the turn to the driveway? What's the radius?
It's twenty feet, I'm, I'm not sure, they have more than twenty feet.
It says twenty-one feet.
I can get you the exact measurement. I want to. Yep, so we have twenty-one feet, I'm sure I'm not muted, we have twenty-one feet from the garage to the back of the pavers. Typically, that would be tight, but there's one benefit we have to this application is that we have that area in front of the rear apartment where you can begin to swing your car to sort of occupy some of that area. So when, we can certainly provide a truck circulation or a truck turning movement that shows that vehicles can get into and out of this garage safely. And I can, we'll also show that if there were two cars parked in front of the apartment, that the vehicles going into or out of the garage would not impact those vehicles either.
So, so let's, along those lines, if we could. It is true that you have plenty of onsite parking, no question. However, it doesn't really work efficiently. The people in the back, under the current design, when they pull their car or cars up, will be blocking part of the garage that's there now. So I do believe that by shortening the garage and getting that twenty-foot building separation, you'll leave that issue, and that'll be helpful. But right now, I, I just, everyone's gonna have to back out of the property, because there's no way to make a movement with your car unless you drive a very small car, where you could do a K-turn to get out and pull out forward. It's almost like you're gonna be backing out of the driveway the whole way. And I think that was the point that was being made by the chairman. So I really think you gotta look at this plan again. It's just too crowded in the back. And maybe come back with plans that show us what you really intend to do. We shouldn't be doing design work like this at the meeting. And that's just my suggestion.
I, I agree with Mr. Frida.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question for Mr. Frida. We've had numerous applications of second-story decks and backyards. Why is there no mention of that in this application? Am I missing something here? We have a second-story deck.
In my letter, I asked for them to give testimony on that deck for the purposes of the board being able to make a decision. Right now, our ordinance does not say you can have it or can't have it.
Agreed.
It's an issue.
It's an issue, because we've had issues now, two applications recently, where we have ruled against, and it's been kind of very clear that second-story decks in the back impact people's privacy.
Well, the ones in the past were more third-story decks. Yeah.
He's splitting hairs a little bit, okay. Let's still elevate it.
But I understand, I understand your concern, and believe me, I share the same one. Our ordinance does need to provide a better description of what they allow and don't allow as far as second-story and the height of decks.
Okay, that's fair. Well, there's one, yeah, one was a third story, and one over on Evergreen was a second story.
Second story.
That was, that was an exit out a kitchen that they, they did a reverse build.
That's true.
And that was a second story, and you're right, the other one was on the third story, which we had changed.
Right, right.
This is a second, this is a second-story elevated, elevated platform.
Right, and that's, that's why we put in our letter for them to give us testimony for you guys to be able to make the proper decision.
I just haven't heard anything from anybody discussing this, and that's a, that's a major red flag.
Well, to be honest, I mean, I was prepared to bring it up, but I haven't gotten to the point where I could, there's been so many other things. I, I really feel like the applicant needs to re-look at this design and come back, because it's, it's very convoluted and hard to keep track of all the changes that are being offered here. They're all positive, I believe, but it's very difficult to keep track of everything.
And let me say this in defense of the applicant, that the changes that we've raised here are as a result of having gotten calls in the last two business days, today and yesterday, from neighbors or neighbors' councils. So we've tried to respond in a way as quickly as we can and as neighborly as we can. And, and so I certainly regret that we don't have more detailed drawings, and that it appears as though we're workshopping it, but we also have tried to take into account the concerns of these neighbors, and as I say, you know, I, I had, I can represent to the board that I've resolved the concerns of Mr. McAllister, the lot directly to the south. And I, I believe that my email to Mr. Shaw, representing Mr. Daniels, the neighbor to the east, is sufficient, because I don't see Mr. Shaw here this evening, and he told me that he was otherwise going to be present, so again.
There's me, I'm, I'm here. Mr. Akins, but you made these deals on the side, they weren't presented to the board to even say, to see about the sound of things you're.
Yes, I, I understand.
So, you know, you have to present a full case, full information, and you heard some feedback from the board. I think you gotta take all that back and come back with a proper presentation.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject here, I, I believe we heard Mr. Shaw's voice, so I, I think while he's here, we should, is that you, Mr. Shaw?
That's me, I'm here, I've been here the whole time. I didn't feel it was time for me to interject anything. Mr. Akins and I did have a conversation today about the deck, and very candidly, I told him, my client, are we honest? My client, Mr. Daniels, whose house is to the east of this is very much opposed to this debt, they made some alterations to it.
So, Mr. Shaw, I had a meeting with you a little while.
We are not in accordance with those alterations.
Mr. Shaw.
We don't believe there should be any debt on that garage, period, for a whole lot of reasons that we'll have testimony on and questions.
So just when you speak, you gotta really get close to your iPad or laptop.
I have a little problem, I don't know what you heard and what you didn't hear, let me repeat it real quick. My client is vehemently opposed to the deck on top of the garage. His property is right next door, they'll be looking down on him, the garage is twelve feet high. If there's a six-foot person on it, it'd be eighteen feet looking down on his shower and his house. So I voiced those objections to Mr. Akins. He called me later and said they were gonna make some modifications. I understand that, but we are still opposed to a deck on top of that garage for a myriad of reasons. And, you know, we didn't have any testimony, or I didn't even ask any questions yet because of all the other discussions that's going on so far. Just so it's clear what our position is.
Mr. Akins, I hope you're taking all this in.
Yes, so I, I've heard, so I think it's appropriate for the applicant to ask that the matter be carried. What is the next available date, Ms. Dicker?
It's probably going to be November.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, November nineteenth.
And if the matter could be carried, Mr. Chairman, without the need for further notice?
Yes, is that, okay, Mr. Kitchard?
That's fine, and you waive all time requirements, correct?
Yes, I'll send a letter to, to Ms. Dicker with a copy to you, Mr. Kitterick, confirming that, yes.
That'd be great.
And assuming that the plans are gonna be revised, could we get them at a minimum ten days before? If you can do better than that, that would be great for our professionals.
We would certainly work to do better than that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so if anybody is here for the Levine application, this is going to be carried until the November nineteenth meeting without any further notice or publication.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a point-of-procedural question, please?
Who's talking?
This is Mike Laird, I'm a member of the community. I'm not sure if this is out of place or not, but just a question for those of us.
Address, sir, please.
So my name is Mike Laird, I live at four zero seven Brinley Avenue. I'm neighbors with Mr. Kaplan and with Mr. Daniels, and a question would be, would it behoove the applicant to hear additional neighbor feedback or give our information to deal with this offline? But, you know, while we hear neighbors have joined this, it feels like there's other concerns that don't need to be resolved at this point, but I think need to be accounted for if possible.
Those could be addressed to me, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're gonna carry the Levine application without notice, and you waive the date requirements till November nineteenth.
Yes.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, you can make the motion.
I made that motion, I get a second?
Who's my second?
I think we do it, all in favor.
Yes.
All right. Thank everybody, I make a motion that we end the meeting. And I'll see everybody on October fifteen.
Yes, the fifteenth.
Thank you.
See you then.
Thanks, folks.
Everybody be safe and healthy.